If you could, stand for a invocation by Pastor Sevy.
Let's pray. God, we just come to you today, Lord, knowing that you go before us in every, every aspect of life, Lord, and we just pray that tonight you would be with our city officials and our council, Lord, as they make decisions for our, for our city. I pray that you would lead them into your will, Lord. It wouldn't be our will, but your will be done. Be with the citizens who have come out to just speak on behalf of our city, Lord. Give them strength and courage as they stand before a committee, Lord, and just, just bless this time. And we pray that you would be glorified. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Turn and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
You may be seated. We will begin with a roll call of council members.
Layman?
Here.
Podak?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Just to note, we do not have Councilperson Hall here this evening. He tendered his resignation at the last meeting. We're waiting for his official letter of resignation. But I will have more to say during the miscellaneous portion about how we're going to fill that vacancy. Secondly, before we continue on to the minutes of the previous meeting, there is an addition to the agenda that was passed out. You all had received an electronic copy of a resolution titled approving and ratifying the prior acts of the Department Heads and Safety Service Director and approving the then annulled certificates for said expenditures and declaring an emergency. I would appreciate entertaining a motion to put that as the last item on new business, if you're so inclined to do so.
I would move that we add the resolution for the then and now item to the end of the agenda.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Layman, a second by Mendoza, to add the then and now resolution to the last item of new business that you all received in your electronic packets. It just wasn't reflected on the agenda. So if you could call the roll, please.
Layman?
Yes.
Baker? I'm sorry. Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendo- or Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, that does get put on the agenda, the official agenda under new business will be the fourth and final item of new business this evening. With that, we'll go back to the previous order of the agenda and approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Second?
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
That does pass. Communications?
I have none.
Reports to committees. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met this evening at 5:30 PM. February financial reports were provided to the committee members, as well as the most recent investment report from Redtree. The Finance Director presented a summary on the splash pad revised estimate. The report showed the other projects earmarked for the parks in 2025 as well. When the carryover for the fiscal year '24 is applied, an increase to appropriations in the Park Fund comes out to $453,010 to be voted on by council this evening. The Finance Director reminded those in attendance that the general fund remains in good position and the revised project balance, or excuse me, revised balance for the general fund in fiscal year '25 is projected to be $10.4 million. Looking through the forecast period, 2029 is projected to end with $9.6 million. He reminded everyone that the city remains in fiscal emergency, but that's primarily due to the water funds, not reflecting three months of reserves, and that the general fund is solid and is able to support the cost of the splash pad. Research findings on the posting of the interest earned on idle enterprise funds were provided to committee members. The research found that at least five other municipalities are posting interest earnings from idle water and sewer funds back to their respective accounts. This would have the potential to reduce the amount of increase needed to water and sewer rates that our citizens must absorb, particularly in years where interest is fruitful. The committee voted to request the Law Director to draft a resolution requiring the interest earnings from water and sewer funds to be credited to their respective accounts. The next meeting will be held Tuesday, April 15th, 2015, at 5:30 in council chambers.
Thank you. Public Affairs Committee?
The entry plus of Seneca County is hosting a glow-in-the-dark bingo this Saturday, March 22nd, from 10:00 AM until noon. A mission is $25. The Fostoria Community Arts Council is hosting a fiber arts meetup on Tuesday, March 25th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at 125 South Main Street. This is a free event with free supplies. And Beyond Laser Creations is hosting a do-it-yourself carrot porch leaner workshop next Saturday, March 29th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Cost to participate is $55 and reservations must be made online. Thank you.
Law and Ordinance Committee?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Report of Officers. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I would, I would request that you pass the legislation for the splash pad as an emergency so that we can enter into contracts immediately and keep that project rolling. I would also ask that you pull the legislation for the solar cells off of the, off of the table and vote to approve to solicit bids. We will bring a presentation to the, to the council once the bids are selected and the high bid is, is approved. We will not enter into a contract until after that, that bidder has come to council and made a presentation.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety?
You will find under New Business a resolution asking for city council's approval to apply for an ODNR 2025 Urban Forestry Grant. I, last meeting, we kind of talked about how American Forestry Grant that we received was on pause. They have unpaused that grant, so we are now able to submit monthly invoices for reimbursement. However, it has not been decided if that will be terminated. It could be terminated at any time. So I feel that applying for this ODNR grant that will range from anywhere to $15,000 to $100,000 will provide us with a little backup funding source. That way, we don't have to pause any projects with our Tree and Beautification Committee. I do ask that we pass the three reading rule and pass this as an emergency. Applications are due by April 1st. This just came to my attention that this grant was available, so that is all I have. Thank you.
Finance Director?
Just following up on the mayor's comments. The fiscal recovery plan that you are going to act on tonight as well would have that three reading rule suspended. Just a reminder that the Fiscal Recovery Commission will be meeting on April 8th to approve these changes that you would be adopting this evening, so that's all I have.
April 8th?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That's the conclusion of Report of Officers. We will now move into the public portion. We will start with the people that requested time. I did want to mention that the first person on the agenda, if you happen to have one, Joe Albrecht is, is not going to be here this evening. They're awaiting the passage of the solar panel bid process before we'd have potential bidders to come and speak at council. The three other people left are Deb Tyson, Rochelle Harmon, and Jill Philiator. We'll go in that order. Because you requested time to speak, we ask that you limit your time to 10 minutes.
Deb Tyson, 800 Woodward Avenue, Lot 9. I am, been kind of out of the loop, as everybody knows, but I will say that I have seen much progress, both in administration and in council. Sorry that we lost a council member, but I still feel, like Jill said, that we need to take our time and give everyone the time to consider what is proposed before we pass it, because we're all living with whatever's past. Whatever ordinances are passed, we live with it, and then it's really hard to change it. It's not really that easy. It's easy to put a new one out there, but it's not that easy to put and change and amend. It's not as easy. So we really need to consider what we're doing and how does it benefit the citizens? How does it benefit the town? What does it look like to outsiders? Because honestly, we need more people to come here, spend their money. Maybe we can't get factories here. I don't know what's to hang up there. But we should be a town proud, and we should be wanting people to come here and visit and spend their money. We have good restaurants. We have all kinds of things. We don't have as much as we could, but we still have places that they can spend their money, and we can all benefit as a town from that. That's basically all I have to say. I do have one other thing. I'd love to know when the convos council meeting, what month that's going to be in. But other than that, I'm good. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the docket is Rochelle Harmon.
Hi, I am Rochelle Harmon. I live at 304 East Brown Road in Arcadia. Today is National Agriculture Day. Fuel, fiber, and food are created and grown in Ohio. Agriculture is the number one industry in Ohio, adding $124 billion to our economy. You don't have to live or work on a farm to be touched by agriculture. It's in the food we eat, clothes we wear, and fuel we use every day. Our farmers and ag industry work tirelessly to feed families in Ohio and across the country. I personally encourage everyone to learn more about the importance of agriculture. To learn more, visit the Ag Day week and month site, www.agday.org. American farmers nurturing our soil, water, and air, and we strive to leave the land better than we've found it. As a resident of Washington Township in Arcadia, Ag Day is important to me because agriculture is the most common way of life in our township. It's something passed on from our ancestors, and it's a legacy we wish to leave for our children and our future generations. I also am a promoter of agriculture in our community by serving as the Arcadia FFA Alumni President and the Big Lake Buckeyes Cloverbud Advisor. Recently, I wrote a letter that was shared to some of the Fostoria Council. As I said in my letter, I spoke about two years ago at another council meeting, I proposed industrial-scale solar project by Cypress Creek Renewables, wanting to vote solar on two sections of farmland and floating on Reservoir 5 in Washington Township, Hancock County. Now proposed, the Third Pillar Solar from Patasko, Ohio, backed by Glinta Capital and the Fostoria Mayor, are proposing floating solar on Reservoir 5 and a transmission line. This project is planned to provide energy to wind waste landfill and the new Ring Vision Gas Conversion Project. My husband and I farm near the area and have been a part of the opposition group of Washington Township for the South Branch Solar Project for almost four years. However, I am glad that the solar project from Third Pillar won't take away any farmland. I also caution you, though, about putting solar on a drinking water reservoir. There are so many forever chemicals in the panels. I don't care how many times it's filtered, the chemicals will still be in the water. I've seen what happens to solar panels when hit by a hailstorm. The glass shatters and the panels crack open. This particular type of project will change the oxygen levels in the reservoir, causing a possible algal bloom. If you remember from several years ago, when the algal bloom was in the Lake Erie near Toledo, they could not drink the water. At that time, I worked at Kroger's and several people traveled as far as Finley for clean drinking water. Some project areas get so hot that birds are disintegrated on impact into the area. Also, the glare from the panels combined with the water glare will cause some birds to be hurt or killed from hitting the panels. More birds attracted to the area also will affect neighboring homes and ponds due to more bird population, and they will dirty the properties around there. However, the main drawbacks of floating solar projects include higher installation and maintenance costs compared to land-based systems, potential disruption to aquatic ecosystems due to shredding, due to shading and water temperature changes, complex engineering requirements to withstand water conditions, and concerns about the environmental impact materials used in the floating platform system. The specific main cons of floating solar projects are the high initial cost. The specialized equipment and complex anchoring systems needed for floating solar panels result in higher upfront investments compared to additional ground-mounding solar systems, maintenance challenges, assessing and maintaining panels on a water body is more difficult and be more expensive due to potential damage from water exposure and weather conditions. Environmental concerns, shading from the panels can disrupt aquatic plant life and alter water temperature stratification, potentially impacting the populations. However, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources is not concerned because they've already been paid off and signed off on this project, just like many other solar projects in the state of Ohio, including the Border Basin and South Branch Projects. And sometimes they even use a 30-plus-year-old study, and they only say, oh, just don't cut the trees unless it's winters, because you know, that's when the Indiana bats aren't as active. That's when they're more dormant, because they're the endangered bats in our location. Limited site stability. Not all water bodies are suited for floating solar due to factors like depth, wave action, and water quality, limiting potential project locations, complex, complex engineering design. Designing floating solar systems requires expertise to address issues like anchoring, cable management, and water resistance. Impact on water quality. Depending on the depth and location, floating solar panels could potentially affect water quality, altering oxygen levels, as I mentioned before, and nutrient concentrations. Weather-related risks. Severe storms or high winds can cause damage to floating solar panels and infrastructures. Severe storms, yeah. Potential for material degradation. Materials used in the floating platform may degrade over time due to content exposure to water and UV light, raising concerns about potential pollutants. My personal main concerns are the water quality, aquatic life destruction, and the fact that the energy created will go to wind waste, vision ring, you heard me right, the landfill, not the residents of Fostoria. You really do have to read the fine print. I attended the Ring EPA hearing in November as I was concerned for our community and didn't know what this project was. However, after the presentation, the Q and A session, and the testimony, it was obvious this is not a project for our community, but only bidding the wind waste landfill. I was really upset that only one neighbor was present, as no one in our neighborhood was informed on this project, but the two of us that came had seen it on Facebook. The last two years, my once peaceful little corner of Washington Township has seen more development destruction than I ever imagined. We have had the possible Cypress Creek Renewables Project, the Borrow Pit Pond Lake Proposal Project from Wind Waste Landfill, and the Three Lowry Sisters, which I believe will be back to litigation, and the expansion project after expansion project with our road destroyed from wind waste, and the sale of the Lakeland Golf Course and the attempt to turn it back into farmland. Recently, farmland sold in Hancock County for $12,005 an acre. And my husband off and I offered to farm the city-owned land in front of Reservoir 5 for $225 an acre two years ago. But you guys only want $50 an acre from Third Pillar? It might, I realize it might increase later on, but solar companies have millions of taxpayer dollars that want, they want to use against us blue-collar Americans that can't compete with them. However, I think the tide is changing with Trump in office, and the solar subsidies are being taken away. About time someone supports the backbone of America. I don't claim to be against solar, but against the locations of these projects. This one happens to be located, as mentioned, in Washington Township. For those not aware, Hancock County has wind and solar exclusion zones in 15 of 16 townships, thanks to SV 52. Washington Township Zoning, which my husband is the chairman of the commission, has set our own regulations for solar, wind, battery, and pond facilities. And the batteries are called BSS. In Washington Township, as I mentioned, we are for A1 agriculture more than energy. We only allow a half-acre array on your private property, and it can only face a certain way. The reason behind that is because, one, we don't want utility industrial-scale solar projects taking away from farmland, which is 49.9 megawatt and up projects, and we want to curb the community-scale projects for the 49.9 megawatt under. Now, I'm sure someone wants to throw the property rights discussion at me. Well, you do have property rights as long as you, as you want. However, only until it affects your neighbors. Utility scale and community scale affect your neighbors negatively by affecting property values, so it's a no-go in Washington Township. I see the Third Miller Project is supposed to be 30 megawatts AC and 39 megawatts DC. However, does any of that really even matter? Because in Ohio, we don't have enough sunlight days to even make this project worth it. In the past year and a half, my husband and I have received several letters for our vacant land or land from Red Stag in Texas and other secretive companies who want to buy our land quickly. However, our productive farm is not for sale or vacant, and will be our legacy to our children. I do know that in lease agreements, even just for an easement and solar win, that you have to read the fine, teeny-tiny print that says the company can put your property up for mortgage, even if, and then if they default, even you, the Fostoria City, could be responsible for paying that back, even if it's already been paid off once before. These slick solar salesmen come waltzing in and paint you a real sunny picture, but at what price to your constituents, especially me, who I don't even get to vote on any of you? But unfortunately, you get to have a say on my drinking water in Arcadia, Ohio. It feels like no one cares what the residents of Washington Township want. We have to deal with the landfill, South Branch Solar, the proposed lithium-ion battery storage facility out by Beer Co., a new pipeline project, and the new Vision Ring facility. Wish our voices mattered to someone about the landfill. And I apologize, can't say the word right, but please stop taking the vache. As a farm near the landfill, it's not good for anyone. The out-of-state trash needs to stop. Someone besides Washington Township needs to tell the landfill no. My husband and I plan to have the creek and our family's well tested soon. Hopefully, we don't find too many harmful chemicals in the water. We have young children who wish to carry on the family legacy of farming. However, it seems that more and more want to take the legacy away. On National Ag Day 2025, please save agriculture in Washington Township of Hancock County and stop taking the vache and protect our water and say no to the Third Pillar Solar Project. Listen to your constituents and those who your vote impacts. And the future generations who will be left to deal with this, as I understand this project could be a lease for 35 years down the road, which, how many of you will be left in 35 years down the road on council or have a chance to back your voices and say, hey, we shouldn't have done this? So stand with America's farmers in Washington Township of Arcadia, Ohio. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Next on the docket is Jill Philiator.
Good evening. Jill Philiator, 402 West Culberson Street. I'm going to start first, just recapping. I am appreciative that you guys are considering doing the splash pad project going forward. I am still a little concerned that if you don't go with it, what happens to the donations that the community citizens raised? I don't have a very clear picture of how that monies will go, so I'm hopeful that you will vote to move on with the project. But if you do decide not to, I need to understand, and so does everybody else who donated to this project, is the money just going to be reled into the park and rec fund? Being it's in the special fund, earmarked but not earmarked, and what will happen to our donations? Because that was something that was sort of promised to the citizens that would be going forward. I know we ran into that glitch on the estimates, and I get that we had the wrong estimate done, but we did the cart before the horse then, because we should have made sure we were within a budgetary before we started the whole project. The other thing I wish to talk about today is, I mentioned earlier that I put the seed in last meeting. I am a proponent of managerial form of government. I think that managerial form of government is the way to go in municipalities now. I understand that a lot of the citizens of Fostoria don't like the concept of managerial, and from my feedback that I received, a lot of them are fearful because we're going to have people not living in Fostoria with no real, in the, in the weeds. For example, someone had said to me, well, yeah, we don't have environments like Tiffin or Finley that have the neighborhoods that they might have been coming from if they were applying from the Cleveland or the big metropolitan cities. So they're not going to want to move here, and so if they get to live even 30 miles outside the area, what is their investment here to make sure? They said, and I'll quote, they said, imagine if it was, the husband was the new managerial person, wife and kids are here in Fostoria, they're used to being able to go to the mall and all these other things, and so he's getting the backlash from the wife saying, I don't want to live here because there's nothing. What kind of incentive, though, would it be if they're living here to try to make it so that some of the stuff that they're missing would come into Fostoria? So they did have a valid point on that. I wasn't even thinking about that. I was like, because I didn't have a problem with them living within a 30-mile radius. But I do understand the thought process, because currently, there are a lot of people, I mean, we don't even have our own fire department. I don't think that are required to be in the city. So we really do need to look at that as we're looking for a managerial. I know that we've tried managerial numerous times before, and we branched it off so that we could make it work. I do wish that we could talk and have a discussion, a review of it, to see how we could make that happen. Because mayoral form of government right now, and I use the word pseudo, and I will be honest, it is a pseudo-form of managerial government we're doing right now. And the citizens don't understand it, but they need to ask those questions. Because right now, you've got Vision 2020. You've got all these non-pro people that play partnership, but they're playing an integral part in it, but they're not part of the city of Fostoria. I thought they were. A lot of people thought they were. But we could have a managerial form using that similar format, but having it so that it is a city-based conceptual idea. And I think that if that could be promoted that way, we might be able to get it on the docket and actually, might actually get it voted in on the next time it's time for a new mayoral managerial concept. Because we would still have a mayor, you know, in the position, but I would like you guys to at least entertain that concept and have it to a discussion. Then I want to talk a little bit about the solar panels. I don't know much about them. As I said in the financial meeting, I am concerned about the amount, and I say this every year. You are one of the highest council city people to do emergency reads. And there, emergency reads are supposed to be just that, emergency reads. There should be enough. Everybody here is on council. You should be able to get your data early enough that you have the opportunity to be able to look at it for at least two reads, so you don't have to do emergency read on the very first time. So there's something awry on that one that's causing the fact that you're not getting it to the three reads. Because then we come in here to hear it, and it's like, boom, boom, it's got to be done today. And so we're sitting there going, oh, wonder what that was all about? When we're talking about the solar panels, I'm still a little confused because I hear a lot of people used to fish in that pond, that reservoir. So you're saying it's not a functional reservoir. There's real no purpose for it, so we're going to go ahead and put solar panels on it, and we're going to bid it to the highest bidder to put the panels on. Concerned? I'm glad it's been tabled and not gone into a read and it's going to the higher bidder. Concerned about the purpose? We all know, I am a realist. I know that EPA will have to be our only saving grace. We'll have to hold them accountable when it comes to the things with wind waste. Because the reality is, the why, the government, it's already a done deal. We are a small, little city, and we're going to get absorbed into this mess 20, 30 years from now. Our children or others will have the out, the end result. Because even though we are trying, you know and I know that in a government situation, the amount of money the state of Ohio is making off of this property is not going to change with us throwing and saying we want this, this. It's got to be the EPA. Problem being, is the EPA really doing what they're supposed to be doing? And that's where we, as the citizens, have to make sure. If it's going to happen, which it is going to happen, and I hate to say that, but it is happening, and they're keep encroaching, and now they'll do that conversion, that gas stuff, to put it in a pretty package. We, as the citizens, have to stand up and say, if this is going to happen, it's affecting us. We have no real say in it because of, we're not in that particular county, but it's affecting us. So we need to go and make the EPA accountable. Make them listen. And that's the hard part, because you can go up the chain and talk to them, and they will tell you what you want to hear. But it will require everybody standing up and having their voice heard for any change to happen. So that was my one thing with the, the EPA situation, the solar panel situation. And finally, my last thing that I wanted to talk about was the, again, I'm going to reiterate a third time, emergency reads, guys. We've got to really look at it, because you, as council, are making decisions, and you saw it, maybe it came to you through your electronic, not even an hour before the time for the meeting. Because that happens. We hear here. I'm sorry, guys, didn't see it, but we put it on this one, but we've got to make an emergency read. You are trusting that the people here are, that are the law director and have thoroughly researched the project, but you, as the representatives of us, have not had time to really look at it. Are you doing us, the citizens, a service by just blindly saying, okay, whatever you say, we're going to agree to, without taking that extra time to represent your constituents? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philiator. That does conclude the public portion of the people who requested time to speak. We are now moving into the public portion of anybody else that's in the room that wishes to speak. The rules do change a little bit. We do ask you to state your name for the record, your address, or at least write it down on the paper up there so we have it for the record.
It's right here.
Oh. And then limit your comments to three minutes of speaking time.
Yeah, that's fine. Hi, I'm Clay Wolf. I live at 4015 Angela Drive, which isn't technically within city limits, but it's around here. Actually, all the stuff that Rachel said, those are all legitimate concerns. I was speaking with somebody today that knows water and knows these systems, these reservoirs are a very fragile ecosystem. When you go and put covers over top of them, it will, one thing that wasn't mentioned was how the wave action oxygenates the water. This could potentially change that, and we know what happens when you take oxygen out of water, creates basically stagnant water, which could potentially, you know, lead to algal blooms, which would be a really bad thing, considering as many problems that we've had with our drinking water in Fostoria. It would definitely behoove us to go slow and do a little bit more research and look into things, because this could potentially be something that could really affect it. And should there be an issue with oxygenation, are all these solar companies going to take the means to correct it? And are they going to put the money in, or are we going to be the ones on the hook? And a 30-year lease, that's pretty excessive, because I think the life of these panels is maybe 10 years. I just know that the substances that are made out of, but yeah, there are things where hailstorms can take these out, and that would just go straight into your drinking water. But I was talking to somebody that, basically everything that Rachel said, he told me all these things, and I was bringing those up, but she already did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joy Walters, 482 Hoover Drive. Bear with me as I try to enunciate some of these words. Cadmium telluride is formed from cadmium tellurium, usually sandwiched with cadmium sulfide to form a PN junction solar PV cell. Companies tell you they won't leach because of a rubber seal all around the outside of the panels, 30% less energy output when no sun. The toxicology assessment. Brookhaven National Laboratory and U.S. Department of Energy are nominating cadmium telluride for inclusion in the National Toxicology Program. This nomination is strongly supported by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory and First Solar Incorporated. The material has the potential for widespread applications in photovoltaic energy generation that will involve extensive human interfaces. Hence, we consider that a definitive toxicological study of the effects of long-term exposure of cadmium telluride. According to the classification provided by companies to the European Chemicals Agency and reach registrations, it's still harmful to aquatic life with long-lasting effects. Additionally, the classification provided by companies to ECHA notifications classifies it is very toxic to aquatic life, the long-lasting effects, very toxic to, again, aquatic life, harmful if inhaled or swallowed, and harmful if coming in contact with skin. So the need for research. According to a professor, Energy Technology and Policy Research at the National Renewable Energy Laboratory says, we really need additional research on what some of the potential impacts are, thinking about these water ecosystems. For example, the shade might prevent the growth of aquatic plants, or the panels might cause problems for local waterfall, and migrating birds that rely on reservoirs as pit stops. Environmental impact, the floating solar negatively impact aquatic ecosystems, electrical components could also create electrical fields unnatural to the site, while the slow process of corrosion and degradation could release chemicals and microplastics into the water over time. There are no environmental studies performed on floating solar projects yet. So we live in northwest Ohio snow belt area with high winds, hail, tornadoes, ice and snow. Once a panel is broken or become damaged, they will leak. Now we need additional chemicals to treat the water and correct that ecology. Once the panel is broken and damaged, they will leak. Oh, I'm sorry, I repeat. Different areas of the covered, non-covered water bodies create their own ecosystem, creating potential issues of a different growth species and sediment to aquifer floor. They degrade over time, the cheaper cost of photovoltaic panels doesn't last as long in time of years, they don't retain the life in watts they put out. Disposal, improper disposal can lead to pollution of drinking water due to leaching from chemical components, leading to serious health problems from consumption, damage to ecosystems when released into rivers and streams. How do we handle this? Contact your local recycling center or hazardous waste collection site to determine how to safely dispose. Do we have this? Avoid dumping used photovoltaic equipment into landfills, as this could contaminate groundwater sources through leaching various chemicals into nearby surface waters or underground aquifers. Again, more research. It is time to return to common sense, return of investment to our natural resources and beauty for generations to realize and enjoy, instead of providing conglomerate corporate profit. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Hello, my name is Lanny Boz. My wife grew up in Fostoria. I've always had a Fostoria address, although I've never lived in Fostoria. I've had a Fostoria address all the time, except for when I was in college or the army. And I'm probably wasting my time, because you're all pretty bright, and you probably already know what I'm going to tell you. But back in 2020, there was a land agent started coming around and wanted to lease our farm for solar. And at first, I thought, that might be all right, we'll do 20 acres, and it's easy money, $800 an acre. And so they sent us a contract. That was so, that was the end of me liking solar. They, instead of wanting just 20 acres, they wanted everything I owned. Well, they missed a cemetery lot. They were talking about 800 acres, they wanted me to indemnify them. So whatever went wrong, it was my fault, and that's not too good. And there was two whole paragraphs of the details of when they were going to start paying the $800 an acre. And I started wondering, where's the verbiage that describes when they're going to stop? How do I know? They tell me they're not producing electricity, and that's the end of the money? And a panel stay there for another 10 years? There was nothing in there that described that. And I just hope that the city of Fostoria doesn't get tangled up in something bad like that. I know you're smart enough, and you've got a law director that'll probably go over the contract with a fine-tooth comb and catch all that stuff. I just wanted to warn you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Boz.
On someone's behalf?
No, sorry. No, you may not, sorry.
Hello, Rebecca Kimball. Address is on the paper. I just want to, I guess I don't know, what I have is like a question type, I know you can't answer it right now, but at least you'll hear what I have to say. Like when it comes to the street repairs, because lord knows, all of Fostoria, the streets are horrible. My car was nice when I first moved back to town, it's not nice. My thing is that I've listened in some of the meetings, and I'm not all this financial, whatever, but I had heard that, you know, it costs millions to fix the roads. But it's millions because we're paying other people to come in and do it, instead of buying the supplies and having our city do it. I mean, what I looked up today for two miles, which I don't have the exact whatevers, but it was like 600,000 max, I think, to fix like two miles of asphalt. But if you have somebody come in, you're tacking on one and a half million to get it done. And it's like, why aren't we trying to better, do better with our funds, instead of paying people out of town? Why aren't we buying supplies and paying our street city workers to do what it says they are to do? Like, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Since nobody wants to get up here, I do. Everybody knows me, I'm, my name's Lewis Watkins. I lived in Fostoria all my life, I live two streets out now, but, you know, 30 years ago, they told me in three years I'd have city water. Well, if you guys are going to put stuff over your water, keep it, I'll settle with the dump water. I mean, realistically, my water's not drinkable. I won't, if you lived in my house, I wouldn't let you sit down and have a bath, you'd have to take a shower, because I wouldn't allow it, because the water's that bad. Am I lying about anything about that water, Bob? That water, come drink it. I'll offer, I wouldn't, my dog won't drink it, she's smart enough to stay away from it. I thought you were going to be a great mayor, I really did, but to put something like that over your water system? My goodness, what a disappointment. I really thought you were the one. And I don't mean to make you feel bad, you know, I can see your eyes, but that ain't the thing to do. There's ground out there, don't tear up that water, you guys have to drink it then. And I may have to drink the dump water, but that's the way that goes. But to destroy your only water source? Terrible. Let's talk about the trucks, these semis and these big commercial trucks that go to the dump, they use Poplar Street. Poplar Street, Main Street are well marked, no through trucks. When you enter Loudon Township where I live, it is clearly marked, no through trucks. Why aren't you guys stopping your trucks from coming through those trucks? I seen one go down Wood Street, and later I seen him come out another street, how many streets did he tear up in his vacation going to Jones Street instead of Jones Road? You know, and I seen one come up Poplar Street here, right there beside the old roller skating rink. I hope somebody gets down there and picks up that great big piece of sidewalk that that semi peeled right up when it ran over it. But don't destroy what you got. You know, this town used to thrive, and I know you remember those days, this was a good town. This was a place you liked to call home. Not no more, not no more. I never thought I'd want to move from Fostoria. But that's where I'm at, from that. I hate the thought, when I sell my property, the poor person, they get stuck with the water. Because years ago, when you guys ran the line down Poplar Street, the water line, which turns into Township Road 21, which goes right to the dump, and by the way, we were talking about no through trucks, as you come out of the dump, they got a big sign there, no through trucks, but they go right on and come right on through. We don't get paid to get our streets covered either, we have to pay for that, too. So there's a road right in front of the dump, why don't they use 23 and that road right in front of the dump and let them take care of that road? And there was something else I wanted, I don't want to sit back down.
Watkins, your time is up.
Oh, I know. I want you, you're my friend, out back.
Second time, all right? I said it twice.
Does anyone else wish to address council from the public? Seeing no one jumping up, we'll move into old business. The first ordinance on old businesses continues to be tabled, as we're still awaiting the Board of Education for the Fostoria City Schools to act on that piece of legislation before we can even begin to entertain pulling it, putting it back on the table to discuss. So we'll start with the second piece of old business. That's the CHIP Lab.
Yep. An ordinance, correcting ordinance 2023-14 in advance to the CHIP Lab Grant Fund, whereby the ordinance 2023-14 authorized an advance of $24,000 from the general fund to the CHIP Lab Fund, should have been an advance of $23,950 and a transfer of $50.
Move to approve?
Second. We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to approve this ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
This is approved, it becomes ordinance number 2025-18.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the opioid settlement fund and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lake to approve. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That is adopted, ordinance number 2025-19.
A resolution authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Public Service and Safety acting as agent of the city of Fostoria to execute and deliver to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation all necessary instruments to effect a good and sufficient conveyance of parcel of land from the city of Fostoria to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation in the vicinity of 537 South Poplar Street.
That was the second reading of that resolution.
A resolution authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Public Service and Safety acting as agent of the city of Fostoria to execute and deliver to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation all necessary instruments to effect a good and sufficient conveyance of parcel of land from the city of Fostoria to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation in the vicinity of 402 Ohio Avenue.
That was the second reading of that resolution.
An ordinance amending section 1355-02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled additions, insertions, and changes relating to fees and permissible grass height.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 917.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled tree lawn maintenance relating to permissible grass height.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 1307.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled duties of owner relating to permissible grass height.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 1305.04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled yard area maintenance relating to fees and permissible grass height.
That was the second reading of that ordinance. The last ordinance under old business is the tabled legislation from the previous meeting that has not had its first reading yet. Is there any motion to untable that this evening?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd like to explain. He needs to come off the table. We're not committing to anything. It's part of the exploratory process. I'm going to vote at the end of the day on what's best for Fostoria. But I think that they need to come here and tell their story, and we evaluate it fairly. I know there's all kinds of stories going around. I'm not completely sold on it yet, but I'd like to see the process. At least, let's get this thing started and, and see if we get educated as time goes on.
Do we have a second to untable this? Once, twice, that motion is denied by lack of a second. With that, we will move into new business.
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the 2025 Financial Recovery Plan for the City of Fostoria and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a motion by Lake, second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
That does pass. It's ordinance number 2025-20.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the general fund and Parks and Recreation Fund and transferring funds from the general fund to the Parks and Recreation Fund and declaring emergency to exist.
I move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Podak to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Podak, a second by Cassidy to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Baker, I'm sorry. Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
That does pass. It's ordinance number 2025-21.
A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fostoria, Ohio to work with the Tree and Beautification Committee in executing an application for the Urban Forestry Grant Program.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Lehman to adopt this resolution. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
All right, that becomes resolution number 2025-22. And then, we're going to move into the last piece of new business. Can you have a copy of that? Okay.
A resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the Department Heads and Safety Service Director and approving then-and-now certificates for said expenditures and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions?
Second.
We have a motion by Podak, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Lake to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
That does pass. It becomes resolution number 2025-23. And that concludes new business for the evening. Is there any need to go into executive session? Seeing none, we'll move into miscellaneous business. To start with, to talk about the councilperson hall vacancy, now referred to as the councilperson at-large opening. We do have an official opening that does start the calendar or the clock ticking today with day one, as this is the first day of the actual vacancy. We still need officially the letter of resignation from councilperson hall, just so it's in the books and on the record the way it needs to be for the state of Ohio. What we are requesting is that any citizen of Fostoria, because this is an at-large position, you only need to meet two requirements. One of them is residency. You have to live in the city limits of Fostoria, not just own property, but to reside in the city limits of Fostoria, and you must be an elector, which means that you've basically voted in the last election. If you have an interest, please submit your interest materials to, if the city doesn't mind, to the city office during business hours. Typically, that's some sort of letter of interest resume, and then plan on attending the city council meeting on April?
Fifteenth.
The eighth. So, Tuesday, April 8th, which would be the next council meeting. So, any questions on that? Is that, did I look at the wrong?
I think you did.
Wrong?
I think you did.
First.
It's not the first. Oh, I'm sorry. The first Tuesday is the first. So, yeah, we'll do it on the first. My apologies. So, Tuesday, April 1st. So, I guess our first April Fool's Day joke is the wrong date. So, so Tuesday, April 1st will be when, when we ask for people to bring in those materials. I'm hoping it'll get published in the paper with the article written about the meeting tonight. It'll probably be put on the city website. It'll be in our, definitely reflected in our minutes. And so, anybody with interest, please bring them up to the city office during business hours. We will likely go into some sort of executive session if that, those materials of people's interest could be disseminated to the clerk prior to, so it can be distributed to all of us. We would ask anybody that would like to be a candidate for that open position to come to the April 1st meeting to essentially speak your case. And then, hopefully, we'll still vote yet that night and have someone to get sworn in at the next meeting. So, any objections to that process? All right. Any other miscellaneous business, then? Sure.
Just wanted to bring up one question. It's been discussed at the Saturday meeting that we had for council, and it's been brought up at a couple of different council meetings. But if I recall, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, and I can take it either way, but according to the charter, if we did not go with the city manager form of government, it can't be revoted and brought up for 10 years. Does anybody know the answer to that?
Not exactly correct, because we've, we had the charter meeting that, that portion was, well, the whole charter was voted down. We revised it and had it separated. The revisions of the previous charter meeting was, was voted wholesale down. We put it back on the ballot.
Separated.
Next, with all the items separated, so the voters got to vote separately, they continued to fail the managerial portion of government. I believe we put it on there a third time. It was struck down again. So, I think we are allowed to put individual items onto the ballot following the Seneca County balloting process or the state of Ohio's balloting process.
Yeah, if you look at the charter in a different area, it does allow council to put resolutions before the voters to change the charter, as well as the 10-year review. It must be reviewed every 10 years, but council may take it to the voters in between.
Okay, that's where I got the 10-year, then, so.
Yes, you're correct in that.
So, I was right. It has to be reviewed every 10 years, but it could be brought up at any time.
Right. And there is time. There's about three, two and a half years before the mayor's term expires, if that's something that a council would want to do. So.
Mr. President, I would also like to address Matty and just say thank you. In addition to filling in as Safety Service Director, you're still doing your admin duties, and I'm not sure if anybody else noticed, but you have been rolling out item after item for the community. Great communication, updates to people, tools that they can use, and it's just been tremendous. And to do that while you're doing double duty is recognized and appreciated.
Any other miscellaneous business this evening?
Mr. President, I have something that I would like to address. This is more so for the public. I've become aware of some things floating around on social media about the recycling bins that are placed out at Foundation Park. I think it was two council meetings ago that councilperson Cassidy, you know, commended the city for doing such a great job, and then it seemed like the next week, everything kind of just flipped, and people have really started abusing what we have out there. So, I just want to set out a friendly reminder that we do have cameras out there. City ordinance will be enforced. You know, placing garbage in the bins is a third-degree misdemeanor, punishable, up to 60 days in jail, a $500 fine, or both. So, really, please, if you have any questions about what can and cannot be placed in those bins, call the city building. That's what we're here for. We're here to help answer your questions. Us alongside with OSS have been putting out a lot of helpful information and resources to make sure, you know, communication is open on what the bins can and cannot accept. We really just can't push that enough. It's great to have those out there. I know a lot of people do use it correctly and do enjoy having them out there, but if we don't start using them the right way, they will be taken away. So, thank you for those who do use them correctly. And if you have any questions on what can't go in there, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Don't blame me.
Any other miscellaneous? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
That Cassidy?
I think so.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:03 PM.